You should have known if you hang down, you're right on time.
I would like, Gene was correct, but I mean, he was just creeping across town.
Well, he was probably going the correct speed.
So I waited.
I can't have a speech. Best speech by which, but that's the worst story we're gonna.
Can't have an all opinion. Is it recording now, Carmen?
It is, yes. Yes, you're good.
All right, nine o'clock, I'll call this meeting of Mercer County Commission to order. On the agenda, we'd like to add Beaver Brinkman with Mercer County Economic Development. Just to other business, I think he plans on being here around 10:30, so. And then, special assessment, district 30 day comment period, so we'll add that to the other as well. And then, December 20th meeting. We usually meet at the museum, so we can talk about that, so. Any, the 20th, it's usually the second one in December, so. If the calendar, if I could see that right, yep, 20th. Okay, anything else to add to the agenda?
I'd like to add HR, please.
Okay. Anything else? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Almost approved.
Motion by Rick, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Gene, any discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Approval of the October 18th minutes.
Move to approve as presented.
Motion by Gene, second by Rick to approve the minutes as presented, any discussion, corrections or additions? Seeing none, Gene?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Next, we got review of the bills. And as people are coming in, if there's a sign up sheet, if you would sign in, if you haven't done so, we're gonna go through our bills here for a little bit, so won't be much talking for a little bit.
Normally takes us till about 9:30, just on average.
Yes, sir. Tyler?
Yep, that's our first payments. Yep.
Do we have contracts with the A advanced possess methods? In each one of these departments? Well, I'm just, well, I'm just wondering, do we have separate contracts or?
As far as I know, they are separate contracts, but they're actually working right now to see if we can put it all together.
There, thank you.
I just talked to Donna about it this morning.
Okay.
They're seeing if it can be.
You were reading my mind.
Or beneficial to put it together.
Thank you.
So if we would just list X, Y, Z, I mean, five of them?
Five of them, or six of them, different departments, treasurer, auditor, recorder.
You're talking about the copies, right?
Yeah.
Can't we blanket, can it be, anyway, yep, okay.
They're working on it right now.
Liza's got it under control, all right?
I wouldn't say that.
Well.
I am looking into it, or they are.
Thank you.
It wasn't me, it was them who started it, so they did a nice job.
The smoke probably will be big.
Yeah. Make sure the AC is working for the winner.
Probably it was a week prior, but it was nice.
I read, I read, well, it did say like, maybe not the worst.
See?
A lot of testing, a lot of. No results.
No, but it's fantastic.
Next thing, we see on there, add some socks.
Right, and saying, you're getting inventory up.
I guess.
Basically.
Is this an annual, or have you done this before, or could we test for these programs?
Do you know if that, that was testing as an annual thing?
What?
That annual?
Candy, but I'm imagining.
But I don't know for sure.
Liza thinks it's either biannually or annually.
I didn't see it last year.
Yeah, I'm not.
Of course, I wasn't here at this time, but.
Right.
That was.
I know it's for sure annually, but I don't know she has to do it.
They test for all those.
Yeah, and they have to see. Yeah, to see if we're processing things correctly, or if any things.
We.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you know, anything about the cell phone bills, like for the sheriff's department, because I just think it's odd that the sheriff's apartment area on it would be 412, but then the task force is 464, and there's two guys on task force, but the sheriff's, we get a lot of deputies, so do you know how that's broken off at all? Okay. Yeah, if you could just, because it just seems odd that that task force would be so much higher. We only got one more after that, so it's almost at the end. Don't take this one, yeah.
Don't take it.
No touch.
No touching you.
Why would we have something separate?
All right, will do.
Okay.
Thank you, Carmen. You're welcome.
Sheriff's Department's.
This one's supposed to be in front, or behind?
In front. It's that one, and then this one's last.
Okay. Don't want to get in trouble.
They were at what, Sheriff's Department was?
Yeah, the cell phone, one's how they're broken down, because as far as I know, we only have a couple of task force guys, but then.
464 for the task force.
Yeah, but the other one is 412, you'd think that one would be higher with all the deputies. You would think, maybe it's broken off differently. Yeah. Nah, figure I'm starting over first off, right, and just be good.
If Terry won, no issue.
Yeah. Damn, it just cruises, huh?
If anybody came in late, we got a sign up sheet up front there, if you would sign that. We've got a few more minutes here on bills, and then we'll get back at her. Yeah. Kinda hard to contest a phone bill.
You can reject that one.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills as presented.
Okay, motion by Rick to approve the bills as presented, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. We got a few minutes here until the 9:30 slot. December 20th meeting, typically, we hold it at Buella Museum. I just thought I'd bring it up, I don't know if they usually request it, it's just been kind of one of our historical things, but if we do that, it should be noted and advertised that we'll have a change of revenue, revenue, venue for the December 20th meeting, so I'll move that we have our December 20th meeting at the museum and.
Second.
Seconded by Rick, any discussion? Seeing none, all vote aye, Rick? Gene?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
That motion passes. Special assessment comment period.
Okay, I gave you a document that came in from Bill Galvin, just so you're aware of it, and then our period doesn't end until November, okay, hold on when we get this. It ends November 17th, that'll be the end of the 30 days since it got advertised. So I, so I wanted, and of course, he requested too, that everybody get a copy of it, so you can look at what he's saying, and I attached the century code to it, so then you guys are aware of it. That'll be one issue, so I'm if we have public con, then we'd have to put it on the agenda for that meeting after November 17th. Meeting after that would be the 20th.
No, it'd be the first one in December.
December 6th. December 6th.
Okay, so we'll have to set a public hearing on the December 6th.
Public hearing.
Yeah.
December 6th.
Okay, so we'll have to set a public hearing on the December 6th.
Public hearing.
Yeah.
And then, see if we get any more comments, but as I get them, I'm gonna give you guys copies, so you're got time to look at it.
Okay.
At 11:00 AM.
11:00 AM, okay. I was just gonna say, do we want to set a time? So December 6th, 11:00 AM.
Do we need to make a motion?
I probably would make a motion, yeah. Do you want to make?
That's the special assessment ordinance.
Yes.
Yeah.
In the meantime, we could make changes to it too, though.
Correct.
Yeah. I can make, make a motion that we set a public hearing on December 6th at 11:00 AM for the special assessment ordinance.
Okay, motion by Liza, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Rick, any discussion? Seeing none, Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Okay. Let's see, you want to talk about HR, or do you want to wait for that one?
Did everybody get a chance to look over when I handed it out to them? I think this is the biggest thing.
Is that this thing?
Yeah.
Okay, I have not looked at it.
Did I get a copy?
It must have said Jimmy.
That for sure.
Is this a matter we're going to discuss right now?
I wanted to.
Just asking.
Yep. I just wanted to make sure everybody read it through first, so that way if questions were asked, or maybe they would be answered, we're ready to set.
Good morning. So one question, I have the 500 per week, that's regardless of any hours used?
That's for the 10 hours.
For up to 10 hours, but I mean, it's, it's 500 regardless?
Yep.
Okay.
I have it on my phone, Dan, I can make a copy.
24.
24,000?
Yeah.
Okay, you knew what I was getting at.
Am I right? I think so.
What was that?
I think I knew where Travis was going, got all his calculator.
Yeah, 26,000.
Okay.
Yeah, you had that 50 weeks. We'll give him two weeks vacation. Okay, any, any questions on it to? This is one of those that doesn't like hit the public bidding rules, because it's not that large of a contract, so I think a single quote would be fine from that standpoint. But, any questions?
The only one question I have, like we have one here, I'd like to see one or two others for comparison or something too, is there any, I mean, is there any other ones also that we can look at too?
I'm sure there is, this one just came highly recommended from when I was at the conference.
Okay.
And I went and met with the HR division in the afternoon, and she came highly recommended from all those that were there, so that's why I went with her.
I mean, I'm not looking at what, when we had, we had before, I just was looking at some, if there was something to compare it to, I was always asking, you know.
I know before my department had Brad, my name was Wendy's, and I think she was 50 bucks an hour, too.
For my personal standpoint on that, I wouldn't want to go there, but that was just my personal standpoint.
Which is almost 10 hours a week, would be 50 bucks an hour, that's what I figured it out to be, yeah. At least she was able to come onsite.
She said most of it would be remotely, but if we needed her to come onsite, she could.
To get, yeah.
But then you'd have traveling fees.
Extra expenses for the mileage you stretch, which is ways away.
So do we still need somebody onsite as far as like personnel files, stuff like that?
And she would just mostly be here to like work through the transition of us and help us get a person onboard. Yeah, and she would be there if we had some issues or concerns in the meantime.
Sure.
As well, but that would be her.
Oh, the new woman.
Right, there you go. Like I said, the reason why I went with hers, because when I was at that.
Yeah, I heard her name. I did her name down there a few different times.
She came highly recommended from numerous different HR.
I mean, from my, except from my personal standpoint, I don't want to go with Martin County, but I mean, that's just me, if you guys wanted to. I was just looking at, you know.
Issue within.
Yeah, other comparisons.
Yeah.
One, it's a short term.
I'd say, yeah, she's hopefully only gonna be here until we get that new person.
So there's like eight weeks of the year, nine weeks of 2023 left? So what, there's like eight weeks of the year, nine weeks of twenty twenty-three left?
Okay, just for clarity, there's no um. Century code violation on um. If we were to accept this as, because of the dollar amount, come to twenty-six thousand.
Right, that's my.
Well, if we went to a whole year, it would be that much.
Right.
But, but this is a short term contract for just basically till the end of the year. Maybe short term under the new year, it wouldn't be for a full entire year.
Yeah, but uh, what Jean's getting at is, and I'm not our attorney, but that would be my understanding, is that. We wouldn't be breaking anything because it's a. It's essentially a quote, but it's under the threshold of, and it's typically two hundred and fifty thousand. But professional services are different than like, say, construction, but. As far as any century code, um, I don't foresee it to be an issue if we wanted to run it through legal counsel before we made a decision. We certainly can, so.
Well, I'm not opposed to it, I just. I don't want this.
No.
I want this board to accept it, and then we're told we violated a statute. But other than that, yeah, I think it's a, I'd be in favor of it myself.
Officer Swann, if we wanted to wait two weeks and just do a little more research on it, or do you wanna do it now, or? I, I, I mean, I'm in favor too, but I mean, it's like, are, are we answering all our questions, is what I'm asking.
So, just so I can understand, like, the one question that we still have is, is are we violating any statutes or anything like that, so that would be through our legal counsel? So if I'm correct on this, we could accept it pending the acceptance of the state's attorney, correct?
Yeah, state's attorney review.
That's another one I hate kicking the can down the road any further.
Yeah, that's absolutely true. I mean, every time you move it, it's always moved hard.
Right. Okay. What would we like to do?
I think the chairman should ask for a motion.
Is there a motion to accept or table the HR?
I'd like to make a motion to accept um Tony Wheeler to come in with decoded dynamics to do our HR. And to help us implement our new HR position, um, per the proposal that I presented to you pending the approval. From our state's attorney, that we have it all legal.
Okay, motion by Liza to accept the proposal, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jamie. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing what?
How to fix it in their budget then, I mean, for the rest of the year.
That would be a budget amendment, that'd be a budget amendment that we can do at a later time.
You know what, where are you gonna take it out of?
Be the general fund, I mean.
Yeah, typically would be general.
Is this gonna be effective, like immediately? Is that what we're looking at, or January one, or December first?
Wait till the state's attorney, so it'd be effective once the state's attorney approves.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
One other question for Carmen, then if we, if we take it out of the general fund, is that coming?
We're gonna have to figure out which line item you guys wanna take it out of. So what we'll do is, Gwen and I'll look through and figure it out, and then let you guys know.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll work with Travis on it, as your fourth floor holder.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Okay. Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes. All right, nine thirty. All right, Cindy, go ahead.
Okay, zoning case twenty-three, ten oh one is an application from Oliver Wind for LLC for a conditional use permit. To site, construct, and operate an approximately nine mile long, three hundred and forty-five kilovolt transmission line. Um, the legal description is sections nineteen through twenty-one, section twenty-seven and twenty-eight in township one forty-four eighty-four. And sections twenty through, through twenty-four, section twenty-seven, and section thirty-four in township one forty-four eighty-five. Of the fifth principal meridian Mercer County, North Dakota. And P and Z did recommend approval on October nineteenth with the condition that the proper signatures and notary of the last two landowners be in place. Prior to issuing the permit, um, they did, Clay and Sarah did provide them to me, and them are the, the second and third pages in your packet there. That, that are saying that they're working with them, and really at the end of the day, if they don't sign these, then, then I think there's no project.
Right, cause it's the two power companies, so.
If it's GRE and Basin.
And we don't have a hearing here, it was just at P and Z, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So if I'm understanding this correct, with the two letters from GRE and Basin, we can approve the, the, the permit?
You know, that's the way I understand it.
Okay.
I mean, they're notarized and signed. Well, you could anyway, that was just their suggestion.
And then this would approve the site plan and the route?
Right.
Correct.
We've already approved this one, something with the route, or what?
The P and Z has approved it, but now the commission. I think that was more, just the proposed informational packet, yeah.
That was just informational.
Yeah. So for everybody's benefit, this kinda comes up, um, highway thirty-one, correct? And um, basically then goes over on about two hundred and then hits the um, new switchyard. By, by Stanton, or by the LOS um, station. Any questions, why the commission? Did you have your hand up, or I thought I saw something move, must've just been a hand. I, I wasn't, I thought I saw somebody's hand go up, but I think you just were.
And Clay, some of these individuals on here are obviously deceased, but they have. Individuals monitoring their estate, are, are those individuals signed on? For landowners?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, we would approve it, and then it goes um, through PSC for a final approval. So we're just, we would be approving the conditional use um, to allow the transmission line, and it's. We have lots of transmission lines within the county, so it's just our standard process.
Bless you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion by Rick to approve zoning case twenty-three, ten oh one, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jean. Any discussion?
I guess it's, like we said, we have our penings and everything, as long as our landowners are signed, and.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes. This, this one I need to sign, with the sticker?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Any other zoning stuff, Cindy?
No.
Okay. Um, next thing on there is the Pers issue, I did talk to Todd this morning, he has not heard back from Pers yet.
Uh, the one question I did have is, you know, all of you know that Todd um. Required me to file a grievance before I could get that, has he, I don't believe that you guys have made Jim do it, so I don't know why Jim's stuff is holding me up. Why am I required to do a grievance and Jim isn't? And, and are you gonna, if they, if Pers just says no, Jim can't get it, or then I don't get it either, or is that the?
I don't think that's the intent, but um.
I just think they should be handled completely separately, and they shouldn't be listed in any way, shape, or form together, cause they're very different. Not very different, but they're, they're two different cases, positions.
Well, they are, but I shouldn't be the only one to have to file a grievance in order to get my money.
Agreed.
Thanks, Cindy. I passed it down there, so.
Yep, right here, Cindy. Thank you.
Okay. We can probably start a few minutes early, Jason Horning here. The NACO nine-one-one fee, joint powers agreement, I think we all have a copy of that.
I, yep, I gave you a copy, and then the, the last page is our original copy in two thousand thirteen, this just adds to.
Okay. Yep. Go ahead.
Okay, is there a right to begin?
Go ahead.
Morning commissioners, my name is Jason Horning, I am the current next generation nine-on-one program manager at the North Dakota Association of Counties. And there for about ten years. Um, you have before you a joint powers agreement that was distributed by our executive director. On September first of twenty twenty-three. Um, we've been working with a number of counties, um, answering questions, the. Purpose of the joint powers agreement, or the option, optional service that you have to consider, is um, a proposal to. Um, centrally collect nine-on-one surcharge revenue from um, residents and businesses in the state of North Dakota. The method that currently is used is uh, those surcharge revenues come into the county from each of the telecommunications service providers, so. Uh, regardless of whether they're wireless or landline, those revenues come into the county, uh, the county takes receipt of those checks, um, distributes into the nine-on-one account. And also pays for any contracts that it may have. Um, the next generation nine-on-one program is one of those such accounts, uh, ten cents on the first dollar received. Uh, from uh, from uh, the surcharge goes into the NDACO account, there's also a fifty cent surcharge. Uh, that goes into the state for the statewide interoperable radio network. Uh, it's a lot of paperwork, and I think what our executive director recognizes. That there's a more efficient process um, uh, to consider, and so that's what we have before you here today. We're considering starting this program on January one of twenty twenty-four, um, to, to capture a whole year and to start on a good, at a good starting point. Um, but that'll be entirely dependent upon uh, you all and other counties' consideration of the proposal. Uh, the efficiency of this program is really best uh, when all counties are participating, because what ends up happening. Is telephone companies, uh, they, they don't prefer to have to send checks to every county where they do business, and primarily the larger carriers. Like Verizon Wireless and AT&T, but even the smaller providers like West River Telephone here, uh, needs to send individual checks to, to counties. Where they provide service, so it's a little bit cumbersome, um, to number one, distribute the checks, and number two, to receive them. Uh, so what we proposed is essentially collecting those revenues at the Association of Counties. Uh, we wouldn't take any administrative fee. Um, whatsoever. Uh, we would calculate the amount based on the county's surcharge rate, the amounts due to the next generation nine-on-one program. And the siren program, uh, and then remit the back, the, the rest of that back to a county on a monthly basis. Along with reports that indicate um, where the revenues came from, how many lines uh, are provided by each of the telephone companies um, in this county. And in other counties, so that you have the information you need to do um, um, whatever else you need to do with those, with those funds and with those um. With those line counts. Some counties um, require the line counts so that they know how to pay for other contracts. Um, your county does not um, contract with uh, like state radio as an example, so it doesn't necessarily need those, but. Uh, you'll have all the information you need uh, on a monthly basis with, with one check uh, to deposit in your account, so that's the proposal. Um, we're hoping to have um, you know, uh, a vast majority, if not a hundred percent participation by the middle of November. If we don't get there, we, we may still continue with the program, but we may delay the program because uh, it's, it's not very efficient to, to. Ask telephone companies to um, to make a change, but the, the change isn't uh, you know, uh, a one-stop shop, so to speak, for them. So they, they may still have to send some checks to NDACO and some checks to individual counties who may not choose to participate, so. What I'm here today to do is to answer any questions you may have, um, and see if there's uh, anything else you need from the NDACO. Uh, for, for your consideration of this joint powers agreement.
I think you kind of addressed it, but just for clarification, so um, typically, well, as far as landlines, that's pretty easy to find out. You know, what county they're coming from, but as far as like um, cell phones and things, it's typically however, somebody's set up their account. Like if they're getting billed to an address in Mercer County, then they're paying that fee.
Right.
Is that how it's um, redistributed, or is it based on some other calculation?
So, uh, chairman and commissioners, the, there's actually something known as a primary place of use, it's in North Dakota century code, and. What the carriers are required to do is, is to send the revenues to the primary place of use, so. Um, what ends up happening is, many cases, the billing address is that primary place of use, but there are other considerations that. Um, that the carriers use based on where the phone is located, uh, they have other methods to, to look at where that phone is being used. And to make an assessment on where, where best those revenues should go. Um, so there's cases where uh, you may have a worker that's in the area. For six months, um, not, in, not in every case does that revenue go back to their, to their hometown or state. That, that would come here, um, based on what the telephone companies and the wireless carriers specifically are supposed to do, so there's. There's a number of criteria that they look at to determine what that primary place of use is.
And that information would be provided to the centralized?
We don't, um, as chairman commissioners, we don't actually see that information um, as part of their remittance, and I don't believe. Mercer County would see that either, based on the current remittance process. Um, that is a calculation and um. You know, an evaluation that they would do internally to figure out where those, where those revenues would go. But what, what we're saying is that the information that we're expecting of these wireless carriers will. Every one of their checks that comes in, so when they send in a check every month, they're gonna have every single county in North Dakota, presumably, if, if all the counties. Um, sign up, and then they're gonna show the number of lines for each county, so we'll get that information as part of the remittance to NDACO. And then what NDACO does is it takes, it takes that number from Mercer County as an example, and appends that to the report that would come to Mercer County. So you would see AT&T, Verizon, T-Mobile, along with all the other landline carriers and voiceover IP providers that would be. Remitting funds for that given month, along with the, you know, the, the number of lines that they're reporting for Mercer County that month.
Okay. I mean, the only reason I say that is cause like, I could see a small county like Billings County that's got, you know, maybe a thousand residents, and then you got Cass County. That's got quarter of a million.
Sure.
And then we split it one-fifty-third. It would help some of us, but hurt others.
Sure, yeah.
You basically answered that, there'll be um, some type of breakdown.
Right.
That's remitted to you from the.
We're building that template form, so um, uh, provided the program was for, we're gonna be providing that form to, to every telephone communications company. In, in the state, uh, and we're gonna ask them and require them to, to have, um, you know. To list out every line that they have in the state of North Dakota, but based on where they do business, so um. There may be some providing services in Cass County and some providing uh, services in Billings County, but the, the revenues that were intended to go to that county. Will still go to that county, because we're gonna be requesting the specific specificity on, on the lines that are, are being used in that particular county. And that's how we're able to remit the funds back, and that's how we're able to stand on our position that this should be, this should be revenue neutral uh, for the county. Uh, one of the things that I haven't gone into is the, the whole auditing piece of this. Um, we suspect that there's probably funds that are being paid. Uh, to counties around North Dakota, and this gives our association, or uh, the, in North Dakota Association. And this gives our association or the in North Dakota Association of Counties an ability to work on your behalf and go back to a Microsoft or other or other larger companies and evaluate what they're doing, why we're not seeing revenues from them and making sure that they're submitting those revenues. And and so that, you know, the county gets what's what's due to it.
Any other questions from the Commission?
Is there kind of a reason that like Burley, Keter, some of these other counties haven't signed yet? Is it just a timing? Or do they have reasons they haven't signed?
So there have been some questions that have come up. Burley specifically had a question about being able to opt out. And we have informed them that they are able to opt out at any point in time if they feel that the program isn't working for them. So they're going to be taking that up for consideration at their next at their next commission meeting. We have heard that things are going to go just fine. The auditors, you know, opinion on it is that they should support it. There are other counties that have similar questions. Local control is another example of that. And, you know, our position on that has been, you know, you have the ability to opt out of the program if it's not working. In addition, we're structuring it so that there is a governance committee over this joint powers agreement and over the service that is seated by county representatives from the counties that participate. So there will be still control over those those funds and how those funds are managed. We're we're not sort of closing around that process and doing it ourselves. We'll be guided by county representatives. And there may be some others that just it just hasn't gotten on the radar for the agenda yet. And so that's why we're we're sort of doing this one last push to try to see if we can reach this sort of critical mass of of counties to to kick the program off on the first.
And then this would negate the one that was signed in twenty thirteen, the joint powers, or is this would go in conjunction?
Commissioners, this would be an extension.
An extension.
Yeah, well, it's not really necessarily an extension. It's a new service. The the twenty thirteen joint powers agreement, that's for next generation nine on one service. So that's that's what gives ours or the Association of Counties the ability to negotiate on your behalf for contracts for nine on one to get calls from, you know, the telephone companies to your nine on one center here instead. So there there would be no proposed change to that particular JPA. This would just be a new one.
Any other questions? You've answered all the ones I had, so. Well, is there a motion to to approve the joint powers agreement?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Gene to approve the joint powers agreement. Is there a second? Second by Jamie. Any further discussion? Any discussion? Singed, Gene?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick? I'll vote aye. My motion passes. Thanks for coming up, Jason. You explained a lot.
Thank you.
Got one more. You can fake green on your map now.
Yeah. Do you have a form for me to sign or is it a different?
Yes.
Do you want to take that?
I do.
Is it a scanned copy of it?
Can I scan it too or do you?
Yeah, he said scan. I just didn't want to forget because that happens. All right, anybody need a short, anybody want a short break before we go to highway?
Sure.
Okay, we're going to recess till ten o'clock.
We're eight, but it was.
Eight. I made it.
I made it.
I don't know where Todd is. Since you're here, Jason, I'll make you a copy. And then you might as well take it with you.
Yeah, they just need to let us know when they're planning on starting. I still haven't seen the submittals from you yet. And I'm trying to tell them I need I need to follow up with them here because they need to get those things ordered. You know, it's not a topic they decide, but I don't I don't want I don't want another headache on that thing. We can avoid it, let's try to avoid it, you know. But as far as us, the county, we have everything.
Okay, just a matter of what the contract is.
Yep.
Great. Then Kevin sent that wetlands thing this morning for the core for that box called.
All through our side.
Yeah, for that shield. So I don't know if he's got more stuff coming there or not.
There'll be a whole, no, providers only looking out to sign for it, but we have to put a report together for that.
All right, wetlands mitigation. Oh, really?
Every year for five years.
And then we have to do that stormwater, that's got to be back in Mercer County. But they almost have a bit of a vegetative coverage there already. You know, that get that grass for stormwater because technically go back to the county membership of that.
Yeah, there was mitigation. That's what I'm talking about. You have to inspect that annually.
Right, right.
As part of your four corporate, but if you vacation really well, according to like Dan, I talked with Dan Ackerman from Metal Arts. And he said sometimes the core is pretty good, but they'll, you know, they might shorten it up to three years if it looks like it's something they're supposed to do. If they want to, otherwise they expect to have it. And it's just a once, once a year, and I think they want by, I don't know, a couple of years each year or something. They want a report that says, you know, yeah, I don't know what on, you know, it's actually Metal Arts. Because they hope the project or they're able to practice for the report, so they know, okay. This is what they'll do, they'll check the board. Some counties have self-formal.
Search your partner.
Yeah. But I think some of these in the future. They might take voices.
Every time.
I got a machine waiting for me.
I think it's really, it was this much headers today, I think.
I had mine in the shop for two days de-icing it.
Yeah, that's where it's, we've got it shutted in time.
The uh, but the wind, like, yes, it is, it's windy the day before, day before wind. I got right on the side.
I saw the one down there. Airport road, you have.
Okay.
I said, are there other options of paving or did we discuss that yet or what?
As as opposed to paving?
Yeah.
Well, we talked about cement treated, cement treated less outback. We're going to do that regardless and then those are going to be right alternates in the bid baggage.
So we just.
We have options. Yep. At least that way they didn't have, you know.
Thank you.
Other avenues other than just putting pavement down and that's it?
And one of the things, I think the base did ideally and we can, we can talk about it after after the meeting and stuff. But we'd be having that first half mile, a point six miles paved and then the remainder gravel. And then we could come up with different or alternate scenarios where maybe just do the whole thing, you know, cement stabilized or just all gravel, give them what's already there and we do that type of thing. But the whole thing paved, you could look at different alternates.
That's what I guess I would like.
Sure.
But I mean, that's, I want to look at other alternatives or other avenues other than just having a sixty point six mile paved. I my my opinion is to look at look at other alternatives that's available.
Sure. And if the if the goal is as smooth as running possible for the AMT to get there?
I get that, but then other thing is.
Turbidity is probably the way to go, but.
How many times are we using it to justify how much of it we're going to spend? If we can get a decent decent road that's still smooth, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, there's only there's the only con really to some stabilized material, I think, is this. When, because it will still pothole, it'll.
That's why you've still been in the stabilization and gravel.
Yeah, you don't see the box boarding as much, but it's a lot harder on your blades because it's like it's rigid at that point. You inject even pre-mated with cement and then mix it with water and all that and aggregate. It's harder on the blades when they try to shave it and stuff. And it wouldn't get pothole.
Same thing. We got our people meeting, so I think that also.
You do. Oh, yeah. And it's more.
All right, ten o'clock. I'll call the Mercer County Commission meeting back to order. Next on the agenda is the Highway Department. Go ahead, Ken.
John Shields, bridge change order. Charlie elaborate on that one.
Well, yeah, I guess all we were, I know we made motion the last time, but I see it's still on, I don't. I don't know if there's questions on clarity with any of that or not from my perspective of things, you know, like sitting through that meeting with what we have with the contractor and Todd, you know, I know the discussion at that time was had and we need to make the payment. And I think the reasoning behind that. And again, I don't want to put words in Todd's mouth, but first, I just last thing I want to do is I think Todd's perspective was to try to save the county money. Should the contractor decide to go through with the notice of intention to submit a claim, file a claim? I think Todd's looking at it through that lens. You know, that that's kind of what I took away from it. I I'd rather let him explain that, I guess personally, but that's the lens I'm assuming he's looking at it through because then in terms of attorney would have to get involved and they would have, I think he said, a couple of different attorneys out of Bessemar that are third party to the situation that would have preview and just be forty nine, you got two thousand dollars in paperwork. So knowing that and understanding that is, you know, I get that part of it. That part I understand because we're talking about ninety three hundred dollars. However, you know, from an engineering perspective and where I stand on it, you know, I I can't just change my story. I can't change my mind, you know, in this process, irregardless, where we are where we are because of my opinion on it. And that's always held true. It's that I don't believe the contractor is due to rightfully do this money that they're asking for simply because of the fact that the material was not muck and they are claiming muck material. And I say that confidently. The reason I say that there's a difference between wet material and muck. Wet clay can be dried out. It can be, you know, there can be efforts taken and processes taken to try to make that material usable. And we're working in a channel and I understand the contractor's approach to this. I get it. But I think there's more. I've been down this road before, too many times in my career, you know, with contractors. And I know it's not cookie cutter. It's just they were up against the deadline and they only had like three guys working out there for a bulk of the project. They had a scare fire that they could have used to dry the material that only ran for three and a half hours throughout the duration of the entire project. And they were already in the liquidated damages. So I view this from that lens and I'm not going to open up a checkbook on the client's behalf just because I feel bad for a contractor. So that's the reason I took the the approach that I did. However, going down the other path, if the contractor decides, hey, that's fine. You guys disagree with that. I'm going to file a claim and we we can we can go, we can fight this out and go through litigation and all that stuff. Then I think that's where the money concerned, the spending of extra money comes into play or that's probably Todd's concern if I had to assume, which I don't disagree with that. I understand that. So really, it's how you guys wish to approach this. Do you want it to go away or do you want, you know, to me, there's there's certain things, everything I would, I'd like everybody to maybe keep in mind with this. It's non, it's not eligible items at this point. This cost would would not be an eighty twenty split. So the county would be responsible for the entirety of the, I think it was ninety three hundred bucks or something like that. The 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 federal lane side of things, the state reviews that and they look at that and they say, okay, you know, the feds don't care if, you know, you agree with it or not. They they they're not going to pay for something that the engineer disagreed with because that's, they view that through a lens that the local government in that case is favoring a contractor and they're not agreeing with their engineer. That's the stance they take. Same similarly, the same can be said about liquidated damages. If you looked at eliminating liquidated damages and then just calling it a day, that that's not looked favorably by the state and the feds as well because they say, well, you you can't just eliminate liquidated damages. The contract is what it is. Somebody has to pay it. Sorry, local government, in this case Mercer County, you guys have to pay this now instead of the contractor. So that's that's how they handle it. They don't, they take all the feelings out of it. Just look at the contract. For that reason, we, I mean, we almost always suggest that you, you know, you go about it. I don't consider this a wash simply from and from the county, from the contractor's perspective, it certainly would be a wash, but from the county's perspective, it's not. You know, because you're you 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 can't just say, all right, well, you know, we're not going to pay you ten thousand four hundred dollars because of liquidated damages, but we're going to turn around and pay you ninety three hundred dollars in a change order that you feel you deserve when our engineer doesn't agree with it because you would still be spending roughly ten thousand dollars. And which I I feel you guys should not be spending any of that because of the way the nature of clay and building. That's just my opinion. I I think that there's merit to what Todd was saying there too, only from the stance that if it goes down that path, it could be a headache, could be ugly, could not be, you know. I guess you could ask the question, this headache would technically be, but I question whether or not the contractor would even do it, but nothing surprises me anymore. They, knowing them, they probably will. File a claim. So if we if we if we don't, great, then the change orders.
I don't know if that answers your question.
I don't know.
Charlie, I wanted your opinion on it because we agreed with everything or I agreed with everything you said. But then Todd made the comment that it could have been twenty thousand, not the ten thousand, and so it really isn't a wash. And so then I was like, well, that's different stories.
It's not, yeah.
So I just wanted your side of the story because you weren't here that day.
Sure.
That's the only reason I wanted it still to get your, because twenty thousand and nine thousand are different. And ten thousand and nine thousand are more the same, so.
Yeah. The only way, the only way in my eyes that this is a wash is is for the contractor. They're they're losing ten thousand dollars in liquidated damages, but they're gaining the ninety four hundred or whatever back in this change order, so it's a wash for them. We would be spending ten thousand dollars. We don't have to. Or ninety four hundred dollars, we don't technically have to if we disagree with this. However, they have the right, the contractor then has the right to file a claim.
Right.
And it may ultimately end up that we do end up paying it because they see it differently.
Right.
I just simply have a hard time seeing that personally, but that's again my professional.
No, I just wanted your your side of that story because it was different than Todd's side and the amounts were different. Considerably different that we had not heard the twenty thousand and all of a sudden it was ten and nine and all of a sudden we've got twenty. And so I just wanted your, that's the only reason, I guess, I asked to have it put back on.
Okay.
So what happens to the liquidated damages dollar amount?
That's deduced from their final payment because of the contractual week, you know, they went beyond the July one deadline by so many days. And I think it was seventeen hundred dollars a day or something to that effect. Every day beyond July one that they didn't have it finished, they accrued a seventeen hundred dollar penalty. So I per day, so I believe it was almost, it was like almost a week, five days or something that they went beyond July one. And it it totaled, I want to say ten thousand four hundred or ten thousand three hundred dollars.
Let's just say ten thousand for for discussion.
Yep, so that ten thousand dollars is ultimately the 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 state doesn't have to provide their eight percent match of that ten thousand and the county doesn't have to provide their twenty percent match. Because they don't have to pay the contractor that it's being deduced from the total of what they are in the form of penalty from what they are owed. So before the project gets closed out and everything, we basically withhold ten thousand dollars from them because they took longer than they agreed to when they signed.
Who's we? Who's we? Who gets the ten thou?
The the state.
The state keeps ten?
So.
Keeps, reduces, takes, reduces the check by ten thousand dollars.
Correct, and that ten thousand, if it would have, if they would have finished on time, that normally would have been paid out. How federal aid projects are, were used to a custom scene in eighty-twenty splits order, we would have paid twenty percent of that ten thousand.
So they would pay the contractor ten thousand dollars less. And we would have to pay the contractor nine thousand dollars for this.
Change order.
Change order.
If you approve it, yes.
So we're out nine thousand.
Correct.
It's not a wash for the county.
Correct, that is how I view it, yes.
Which is how I felt like it was being interpreted when we were talking about it as a. Was a wash.
It's a wash for the contractor, but not for the county.
No, the county actually gets dinged twice in the whole matter because.
Right.
You're not getting participation on the change order and you're also not getting participation on the liquidated damages.
It was all probably just play on words, but that, it was presented. Presented different, like I.
Sure.
Or understood differently, or that's why I wanted.
Yeah, and I know it was discussed in the meeting with the contractor that this would be a wash if it was handled this way and of course, the contractor's going to agree with that because. But I mean, I, I didn't, I didn't want to, I, I understand that whole discussion that was had, I, I truly do, I'm not here to say that. You know, you guys can't accept it and pay it, I'm not saying that today, just because I feel strongly that you shouldn't, doesn't mean you can't, you don't have to, I'm just saying that. The whole wash thing is not, that is not necessarily the case, yeah.
Well, I don't really want to set a precedent of us just paying things so that we don't have to. You know, if somebody didn't complete the work that they were supposed to be doing, I don't think we should be paying them for it.
Yeah, I mean, keep in mind, if this, the way fed, on federal aid projects. Any dollar amount in a change order request that exceeds ten thousand dollars is above my ability to approve or deny. I still have to be willing to approve or deny it. However, at that point, it goes to the district engineer as well since they're, because of their involvement, so. You know, there are few, there are certainly, I mean, this is not going to be the last time we get federal aid on a project and we might run into a situation down the road. Where the engineer, you got, you're paying us to basically be out there as your eyes in the field and protect you guys and make sure you get a good product. There may be a situation where we have come into a dis- disagreement with the contractor and it may exceed ten thousand bucks, it could be a hundred thousand dollars. And at that point in time, you know, the, the, the district's also going to play into that decision as to whether or not. They would agree, if it's justifiable and they can basically pass it through the federal level for the added additional monies. They, it's a pretty good system they have, I know it's, there's parts of it that are nauseating, a lot of hoops to jump, but they're, I mean, it covers all its bases and this is one of those reasons how, you know, why they do it that way, but. Uh. No, I, I agree with the precedent essentially, contractors will see that and say, well, you know, maybe we can just, we'll pay the stub of Mercer County because we know this change order. Things work out.
That's my concern, is it, not that I would think people would, you know, I just don't want us to be the county where.
Yeah.
Things like that continue to happen for us.
Uh, you can agree with that. Should we understand that?
And we already.
We already moved on it, so.
We already did this, yeah, this was more just a like, I want Charlie's side of the story.
Sure.
Okay. I think we're good on that now, um.
Thank you, Charlie.
Yep.
Ken?
Next on the thing is purchase of cutting edges for motor graders. Since it is over that five thousand dollar mark. A hundred and twenty cutting edges are a hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents each. So it comes up to seventeen thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty cents.
Is there a motion to approve the purchase of those cutting edges?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion by Gene, seconded by Rick, any discussion?
Just make sure we wear them out.
Well, just a little information there, three years ago when we started going to ESCO, they're out of Bismarck and the cutting edges are, I mean, they're good cutting edges comparable to, uh, Butler or REO. Um, at that time, they were eighty-two dollars a piece from ESCO and a hundred and nine dollars from John Deere and REO. So now, at ESCO, they're a hundred and forty-nine dollars, so that's how much steel has gone up in three years.
Well, I know from past experience too with ESCO and, I mean, they've been around a long time too, so I mean, they, they are a little bit cheaper than.
Right, right.
REO or.
And do you know how soon we could get them?
They're four to six weeks out, but this was two weeks ago, they already, we don't, we had, we had asked them, they had said that, you know, they're getting some, so we have enough on hand for. We're just, we go into next year is why we're.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure we weren't going to be.
Right, because who knows how much they're going to be next year, we probably all know they ain't going to go down, so.
Right.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Gene?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
Um, next is projects for flex funding. Uh, we were, when we were down at that, uh, Gene was there, um, Charlie and Travis and myself with the, um, with the state DOT. And they had said that they have, uh, what they call flex funding. And I just wanted, I know we talked about that bridge on County Seventeen. And we have to get these applications in by the end of this December. So, for sure, that bridge, you know, by, on the spring creek there between Zap and Beulah, but I just kind of want to know. Any other projects that we think we should try to submit, not saying that we're going to get them, but there is like a ratings, I don't know if you got a chance to look at it, there's, there's like a. Six or seven that they, how they rate the projects, because all the other counties across the state are going to be putting all their projects in too, you know.
And it was like forty-nine million roughly?
I forget the budget.
Yeah, it's.
That's every year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess in my opinion on that is like. We got County Road Five, we got County Road Seven, I mean, it's a wish list, I mean, are we going to get anything, fine, if we don't, I mean, we still, we still got the project to work on. Um, my, my problem, my thing is, is that we should put in what we can, County Road Twenty. Uh, those, they need to be, you know, they need more than just putting gravel on, they need work.
Like clay caps and different things like that, so.
I'd say all and everything, especially if we're going to take three years to get bridges done, so.
Yeah.
As much as you can to.
But just do a wish list, then we'll just keep on, kind of like what we do with our yearly projects.
I mean, you're just, it's throwing it up in the wind and see what comes back, you know, and it's.
Worst thing that could happen is they say no.
Yeah.
Right, I'd rather have a whole bunch of things in there and they actually say yes to three of them, as opposed to us just putting one in, we get that one, it's great, but.
But like you said, again, they're rated at, at, as availability as, uh.
Right.
You know, as of need too, so I mean.
Right.
A bridge and things like that are going to probably have more precedence than a ground road, but.
But if you have a list of things that you submitted, they're at least going to be like, wow, okay.
Right.
Well, to give them something, so.
Yeah, you don't want to put it in just a.
And I know Gene had talked about some of these little smaller bridges that.
They don't need to be a bridge.
Right, that aren't really in the system that we could possibly do so we'd have it covered for when, when they do come up, hey, we got this one ready.
My own personal thing would be, we should submit every bridge in the county for funding, I mean, you, nowadays, when you drive around the county, you see a bridge that says weight limit six tons, I just laugh. There's, basically, the egg producers out there right now. A lot of their equipment empty is, I mean, over twelve thousand pounds. Now, I know I harp on this one and people hear it all the times. The field trot dry drive is sixty thousand pounds, it's thirty ton. How am I going to cross any bridge in the county?
Our motor graders though, same, like, it's not, I mean, it's, it's not just egg producers, it's even just our county equipment.
Good point, Jamie, our own county road graders, how are they crossing some of these bridges?
Like I said, we have fif- we have fifty-four bridges that are counted within the deal, like Pembina County, I think has over two hundred bridges. How, you know, and we're sitting here with our fifty-four.
We're sitting scratching our heads.
But I do agree that like some of these, that if we can go to a, you know, even a galvanized collar to get rid of.
You absolutely can, most, especially on those.
The ones that are.
That's the che- that's the quickest, cheapest way to fix them or to get rid of that.
I mean, for the cost of these bridges, you wash them out four times and you can put them back together again.
Right.
Yeah.
But I thought I'd just bring that up.
I'll have some more discussion with Ken on those.
Yeah.
Later, not here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And then the next is, uh, federal, twenty twenty-four federal aid monies. And that, that was at that same meeting, but it needs to be signed by the chair. Um, we had gotten, for twenty twenty-four, we got an estimated allotment of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars. But you got to remember too, that we did borrow ahead for that County Twenty-seven overlay, so technically we were in the whole forty-five thousand.
After next year, you know, we'll be.
But then for twenty twenty-five, we should get that right around that three twenty, so then we would be building it back up again.
That was part of what we were calling borrowing ahead.
Borrowing.
We're not, yeah, we're not borrowing, but that's the term the state uses.
It is, yes.
So, I, I think we always used to do a, you remember Travis?
Did we do a, do our motion disagree with, yeah, if we're going to sign, we probably should have one, so is there a motion on to sign the, it's a federal aid monies?
Yeah, we don't have no projects, you know, for.
Yeah, better than our seventeen bridges showing on there in the program, but as far as what your, the federal count, the DOT county federal aids. Dollar figures and everything, it's basically acceptance of what the state discussed and allotted with you guys at the association, I can't even say.
Okay.
Does this affect any of that bridge over here then too, County Road Twenty?
No, no.
That's a diff- that's a different federal.
Supposedly, we're going to get a bridge there.
You're funny, Gene.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the, uh, state document?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Gene, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Rick, any discussion? Seeing none, Gene?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
I'll have you sign it after here.
Yep.
Um, next is a purchase of a Schulte tractor blower, it's an SDX one zero two, I was waiting for. A deal back from Butler, um, they're one of the dealers for these. Um, it came, comes in at, because it's got the one thousand RPM PTO speed. Uh, it comes in at twenty thousand eight twenty-five and I do have the money in the budget. We have those other, uh, two, we got them from Hazen Motor, can't remember what the name of that, but they, I think we got them in two thousand thirteen, so they're ten years old, but. The chutes are, we welded on them, they're just, that snow is rough on them, you hit gravel, it's the same thing, it's, I mean, they can use, but the Schultes, I've looked at them. They got the actual removable chute, you don't have to get out and actually move the chute, so which is nice because when you're in a tractor, if the wind blows the different ways and that's. For the front end of their tractors, because our challenger end, the keys have the front end lowers, but this would only be for the challenger because that's got that one thousand PTO. And the, uh, case would have a five forty.
What do you usually use this for?
Like blowing out bridges, uh, um, stuff that goes out, uh, drifts up on side of the road, but mostly by bridges and some of the approaches that we get problems with snow.
Some of the more narrow roads.
Areas where they don't have the ability to turn around.
That's another one we use up in, like, Chicago states.
And stuff, right, okay, all right.
Yep.
Schultes are pretty good brands too for.
They're built way better than those ones we got.
And you said you had the money in your.
Yes.
Budget?
And is that a two-stage?
Yes, and then they have, they have them on hand down in Bismarck right now, they just got them in last week, but they have to convert that. That gearbox on the top, so I would think in a week or two, we could have it.
Are you going to keep the old ones?
Yeah, we're going to keep them because that, that, the case has that five forty.
Right.
Yep.
And we can.
But sooner or later, we have to.
Winner like last winner will definitely use them all.
We're off to a bad start already, so.
Yeah, winner isn't for another six weeks?
El Nino.
Yeah. Is there a motion to approve the, uh, tractor blower? So. Uh, motion by Gene?
Second.
Seconded by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, Gene?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Anything else?
Yeah, I just, I brought in a, um, I guess I brought in a task where I know at the last meeting, I apologize if I wasn't able to be here, I know I was the one before that, but. It was discussed trying to get the airport road project design moving along, since we have that budgeted for this year. Um, I put that, I put together a task order, uh, contract, whatever you want to call it, that aligns with our budget that we put together for all of our projects. So that we can try to get this thing knocked out and, um. Bid for a twenty twenty-four construction as we also have it. Set up in our budgets currently, I guess, from our latest discussions. And this is the airport road, this is, um, uh, right now, the way it's planned or looked at. Um, is to have, you know, roughly the first, the north point six miles, a little over half mile to be. Um, cement stabilized base with a, with a, uh, hopatumus pavement. Um, section over the top to the airport, basically airport entrance and a little bit beyond it actually, and then the remaining like point four miles of that one mile corridor would be an improved roadway. Um, you know, and we were looking at also providing alternatives to this, so there's some options for you guys to consider and come bid, you know, bid time, bid letting. See how the numbers come in, do you want to pay the whole thing, do you want to pay none of it, do you want to submit stabilizers, the whole thing and that's it, that type of stuff, I think is what we were looking at. We still have time to get the survey done and the solar morning's done and those guys are pretty much ready to rock and roll, I just figured we could get this thing executed so we can keep things moving.
On page three under number five, is that going to be split between this year and next year, because I think there was only like eighty thousand or eighty-five thousand.
Correct, so the.
This year.
Eighty-five is the preliminary and final design, the sixty and twenty-five, so that's what essentially will be done this year, the remainder is that's a hundred thousand, that's the budget for next year's construction. Additional services is always just the number we throw in there, in case something comes up and you guys need us to do something, we don't have to always get approval. We got a twenty-five thousand dollar budget to essentially say, okay, we need to make these changes, but if you read up on the additional services portion, we can't do anything with that without prior approval from. The representative, in this case, it's Ken or, I guess, I suppose a combination of Ken and Junior, whomever, so. But yeah, we, we just put those in there in case things come up. Unforeseen stuff, I'll just go for it. The actual budgeted number is the hundred thousand for construction, so, and eighty-five for design.
I mean, I think, have it looked at, but like, I know you and Rick had talked about it, I'm just not sure that the amount of money is justified for that whole rule or for any portion to be paved, I don't know.
That's what I was saying, Charlie brought it up earlier in the, you know, earlier in the, today, it's like. The options that we'd have that we can look at, that. You know, and cost wise and justification and all that stuff to put it, you know, put it.
Well, another option we can do too, you know, before we move into a, a, a design of anything, we can put together. Options with cost, you know, benefit to cost ratio and cost justifications, look at and say, okay. Does this make sense, so are we best, what is our best option, it, it might cost more to do this, but in the long run, it's a better option, or. It might cost less, we're going to get a pretty darn good product that was going to probably meet our needs, you know, we can look at different options for that, you know, we haven't really dove into that too hard yet because we haven't even.
Just trying to get started.
That's kind of what I had wanted, and I know you said, like, the one product doesn't have as much washboard, well, right now, the washboards are the problem. So.
Sure.
Potholes probably aren't going to be a problem, right now, it's washboards.
Sure.
But I also don't want the last mile of road to be forgotten because we paved the first point six, so.
Yeah, sure.
Or it to be a washboarded mess and.
Yeah.
So, that's why I kind of wanted options.
We talked about cement base where there's other options there too, I mean, you can do. Variable things there then, but I mean, you just have to look at them, again, it's a cost ratio versus a benefit there too, so.
Is there a motion to approve the contract, because we can't do anything until we get.
I'll make a motion approved, because I want to see the other half of it.
Motion by Rick, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Liza, any discussion? Um, I am going to abstain from this just because I work for Interstate, um, as far as the vote goes, but any other discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
I'll abstain, that motion is approved. Should we all sign this one, right?
Yeah, whatever, whatever.
Do you have anything else?
He's got to sign this, Travis.
Ken, have all the roads in the county been cleared of snow, I know it's been, I know.
Yeah, we're going to go back out again because, uh, maybe, uh, Monday or Sunday, Monday, Monday, we're done. It's kind of surprising we're not, uh, I mean, it's kind of weird, like, it's going to blow off, so, you know, we're running off. It's kinda surprising they're not, I mean, it's kinda weird, like, it's gonna blow off, so, you know, we're running off.
Okay.
So this is a task, we made a motion to approve the task. Contract. In a minute, it's gonna be a task.
Right. I remember you talking about that first, I was wondering if that would be an option to help out up there.
And I saw they sent, I think the wind blew a lot of that away.
Uh, DJ CDC, which is what that is, that's their sort form.
Just after, when it warms up.
This is the same thing, but on the engineering side. It's a standard, it's a master contract and stuff. So everything, if we do.
But our side is actually gonna.
We have more snow, like at our place than like even the clear. We did that pocket that hit center, just one of the strips.
That's acceptable.
Okay. So, of course, the weather, they were. My poor driver was so frozen. No, probably on the, from the crossroads. Okay. It all went to the T, you think? No, I think it went, what I could see, it went to the T, but didn't go to the. Yes.
Is that right?
Be great for us. Thank you.
Sure.
As of Monday.
The other thing we can do too. So just so you know, like this, just we're saying. Get into this thing, we look at alternatives. And you guys.
It looked, everything was pretty, you know, pretty July, right?
I was just thinking, question maybe.
Yes, and at that point, we just. We circle back to it later, if you guys wanna think about it later.
My question is just like, I wanna, like I said, I wanna see.
You know, we have to, publishing like that.
You know, like what you were talking about, what's the cost, what's the benefit, ratios of, you know, how many.
We still have this and this. We haven't done our.
That is, it's a counting. There's a line, and it doesn't go the whole way. It's so bad that way, but I followed the plot, I was. So, cause she left my box. She could be your neighbor's, and I said, oh, are we picking it in on our own, you're fine.
It's always a chance.
I, it took me two hours.
No, we're not, okay, we gotta get back to our.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
We'll go to the other business, we got Beaver here from Mercer County Economic Development.
Good morning.
Morning, sorry, we got a little sidetracked there.
So I just wanted to come today to give you guys some updates. One of the things, part of my job is to go to a lot of conferences, and so bring back some information from those conferences that affect Mercer County. So you may or may not be aware, some of these are all of them. As of August of this year, year to year, year over year, oil production is up twenty percent. Why is that important? Because we got half, half as many rigs out there, so it would be very efficient in removing oil in the Bakken.
I made noise, and he made noise, and I didn't hear what you said.
Okay.
Oil production's up twenty percent.
Okay, and I heard that part, and I didn't hear the rest of it, so.
The, the reason that's important is because we have half as many rigs out there drilling, so being very efficient in, in the oil that we're drilling. Oil production is over one point two million barrels per day. Currently, the state has a ninety-six percent capture rate. The Bakken is approximately a half drill, we have seventeen to twenty years left of drilling in the Bakken. North Dakota needs five times more CO2 than what the state currently produces. North Dakota will need CO2, CO2 production, storage, and or purchase three point two billion tons of CO2 to allow for EOR of ten billion barrels of oil in North Dakota. First of all, hundred dollars a barrel, at ten billion dollars, you guys can do the math on that, that's a lot to our state economy. Why is that important for Mercer County? Because we are the key storage and production county in the state. So the oil in this, the oil county is gonna be looking to Mercer County for CO2 for enhanced oil production. DOE, this is just about two weeks ago, the Department of Energy awarded the Heartland hydrogen hub nine hundred and twenty-five million dollars. ERC will partner with Marathon, TC Energy, XL Energy to create the hub in the Dickinson area. Five hundred million of those dollars will be used for CO2 capture, as well as hydrogen and fertilizer production. Why is this important in North Dakota? Because Dickinson doesn't have any water, and they're gonna need water. More likely to be southwest water, more likely gonna be another line. There's gonna be water, Dickinson's, they can't expand, they're stuck, they don't have enough water to supply where they're at right now. So somehow, in the most logical places, take it from Lake Sakakawea, same place they already have easements and rightaways.
They don't have southwest water in Dickinson?
They do, but the pipes aren't size large enough.
Yeah. And their intake is in Mercer County?
That is correct.
And they added one too, didn't they, this last year?
Yes.
Okay.
Dickinson actually got southwest water way before any of us in Mercer County got it, I believe. Yeah, cause the first line went there in the eighties, so.
So they're limited because of pipe size or because of permit?
Pipe size, yeah.
So they can't get enough raw water to treat to get the potable for the Dickinson area, well, the whole Southwest authority.
Cause the first line that went to Dickinson was raw water, they treated up there, unlike what we, we get treated water for most of our residents and cities and stuff in Mercer County, so.
Yeah, the Zap plant, basically.
Yep.
North of Zap.
But so, that's why it's important. Dickinson's very excited about this project, but their mayor's going, I can't build, I can't expand, I can't build more homes, we need water, so. ERC, as you all know, has been working with rare earth minerals and elements. Graphene and graphite are the most prominent rare earth element in lignite coal. The main purpose for those two elements is for semiconductors. It's been, this doesn't get publicized, but it's been over a year that China has either reduced or completely quit shipping rare earth minerals and elements to the US, which is seriously hurting our industry, including our military. ERC currently is one of two applicants for a rare earth mineral and element extraction facility that is a one hundred and forty million dollar grant. It's between ERC and West Virginia. We'll see what happens, but Center would be the place more likely where that extraction plant would be located because of, they've been working on rare earth mineral extraction and testing there more than they have in any of their locations. But that doesn't mean that we can't take and try to get something here in Mercer County. It's just gonna take and be a, a little bit harder if we don't get that grant money, we're gonna have to look for other grant money.
And that rare earth that can be extracted, and then the coal can still be consumed?
Yep. I mean, if, if I had my brothers, we'd be extracting rare earth minerals from coal every day. And again, it's, it's a, right now, they're looking to do it in a very small process, and then it would expand into something much larger, so. Talon, who you've all heard about, they're still working with DOE to finalize their agreement. Their agreement, DOE and Talon's agreement was a hun- one hundred and fourteen point eight million dollars. Talon recently received another twenty million dollars from the Department of Defense for exploration and securing of US nickel deposits. And again, this is Department of Defense wanting to make sure that US is no longer dependent on China and Russia for nickel. Everything we do, all our military, all our industry, everything we do requires some sort of nickel, it seems like, for stainless steel or anything, and so we've outsourced that for years, and now we're trying to bring that back into production of mining here in the United States. Last thing I have is, again, we'll be sending out membership letters in the near future, hopefully next week. We did not send a membership to Mercer County, hoping that we'd be able to work with you guys in the future on some other type of funding. And that's all I have for an update, so.
Is there a location for Talon?
That has not been.
Determined?
Yep, to be determined, yep, that's not been disclosed yet, so. Anything else, any questions, concerns?
CO2 production. I was talking with Amanda, but I mean, this is just, you're talking seventeen and twenty, twenty years of, of oil left drilling in the Bakken. So with the CO2, we would be able to enhance that much longer by pumping two CO2 to capture more.
At least double that life.
Okay, that's what I was.
Yeah.
Oh, it was me, that's what I was deducting, but I was making sure that that's what.
And it was seventeen to twenty years of drilling?
Left, yeah.
Which then you'd have production.
Thirty, forty years, so.
Yeah, it's usually the best the first few years, and then the CO2 is the enhanced recovery, it keeps those wells producing, so.
I guess there is one other item, and I have to remember what date it is. It is November sixteenth. We are having USDA come to Beulah at the Civic Center, and.
Thursday?
Thursday, yeah.
That is, yeah, Mel, Melanie Bauer Ducart will be presenting. If there's anybody in the county that has a disability and needs improvements done to their home, the USDA has a program that that can be done a hundred percent on a grant, depending on income or cost share. So if you know of anybody, we sent letters to everybody that's on our homestead tax program. So if they need a bathroom that needs to be ADA compliant or ramp into their house, they should attend that meeting because they can get information at a special meeting, a private meeting with Melanie, and she will take and get them information so that their house can be adapted to meet their needs.
What date is that?
November sixteenth, at one PM at Beulah Civic Center.
I need to be there, but I can't.
I'll, I'll have flyers in Mel's contacts, so she can take in, she can make, she'll come up here and make appointments to meet with people in their home and do inspections, whatever you need, so.
I mean, it's not for me, but I'm helping with my mother, so.
Are you sure?
I am the oldest on here, so.
You were honored today.
Any other questions for Beaver? And thanks for coming, that's good information.
Thank you for the updates.
Thank you.
Portfolios, who would like to go first?
I'd start, we had our, I got re-elected again, I'm the president of the Fair Board, so, and.
A life term again? It's a life sentence?
Yes. We had our annual meeting, we had to go on, our convention is, that's why I won't be here, the convention is the sixteenth through the seventeenth and eighteenth. But I didn't get to P and Z, I didn't get to, I talked with Mole, but I didn't get over to the meeting over there simply because I was desperately getting my beans off the field before the snow. So I'm glad I got that done anyways, but as far as getting my portfolios, other than the Fair Board thing, that's about the only thing that I've got done, so that was quick, and. Carmen can help me with this, is that we've, we've implemented the sherfs.
Disaster?
No, that they're.
Safety purse?
No, they're, they're not the purse, but they're, they're money for their employee monies that we started, that you took it out of his budget for the raises.
Oh, yes.
Yes. We started with that, just now.
Yes, actually, the last payday.
Right, so that started, so, you know, we, he had it on, we'll take it out of the budget and.
What, why does that, can you help me understand?
The raises that we had talked about.
Kind of spot raises for some employees.
Right, to get them up, so then these ones that have been there.
At the speed that we started.
But Terry had wiggle room in his, it was all in his budget.
Budget right now.
Some of the funding that you had asked me about earlier, we, I told him to use that, those things. And he had the funding to make it work, so we, we started now.
Okay. Gene?
Road Department was here, so that's my biggest, biggest one, you got the, pretty much the update from him, other than that, they're busy with the roads. We had another little, it's no event. It was pretty quiet on my phone, so I know other commissioners probably got calls, but I, mine was quiet. Other than that, I don't have any other updates.
Similarly, I'm kinda in that lull period right now, P and Z is not for a couple more weeks, and everything else is, no updates, we'll have, Library Board will either be the end of this month or sometime in December, I think it's usually November, it's usually every other month, so.
Which one?
Library Board. And then Vision West, they were supposed to have a meeting in Stanley last Thursday, but that got canceled because of weather.
I don't know, Carmen, if you want. So both of you are on Vision West? Cause I was looking, and the reason why I sent, I don't know, I, I have a chart, so.
I don't know if I'm necessarily.
Cindy sent it out to all of us for the Vision West conference.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, and I, I don't know if we wanna, I don't know, a few of us were maybe thinking of trying to get down there to Dickinson next week, so maybe we want, does that have to be posted as a potential?
Yeah, probably shouldn't.
If you can post that, Carmen. Yep, okay, so what dates are this conference? I think it's the.
It's November.
Eighth.
Yeah.
Sixth.
Eighth.
Eighth through the sixth?
No, it's just a, just a one day, just for a few hours, I think it's the eighth.
It's usually a Thursday.
I know I got that one, I did get that email, I just.
It's next Wednesday.
Oh, is it next Wednesday? Okay.
So I'm gonna post that on the website.
That, there could be a potential of a quorum, not that we're gonna be doing any.
It's a natural resources public meeting, November eighth. Eight in Dickinson.
And then, I'd have to check with the Extension Service, but there is supposed to be a training session tonight in Hazen. I don't know if you heard anything on that, Dan? The Extension Service was doing a, I think a leadership training. For four H, yeah. But that's all the updates I have, Liza?
I don't have much either, because I have an ambulance at airport later this month, it's late in the month here. I'm sorry, first of the month. I did meet with Donna, and I just wanna remind our community about the homestead credit application and make sure that they get that turned in to us and plenty of time, it is only due February first, but it would be nice if we could get them coming in a little sooner. And then also, don't forget about the disabled veteran application, which is also due at that same time too. So just a couple of reminders there, and then I, John, you said, when was it that you were sent out the taxes? Is that the end of, or Christmas? Second week, second Monday in December.
Christmas.
It's a Christmas present.
Try to have them to you guys the second.
You should include chocolate. It's festive.
You just have to send it on red paper, then.
Yeah.
And that's all I have for my updates.
Okay, Jamie?
We had LEPC last Thursday, no, Thursday before. Frank Sen was gonna get us some quotes on sirens for Hazen and Beulah Bay, so we can get that submitted for the grant. We have another meeting, I think, in a couple of weeks. And then, talked to Candy yesterday, the snow really hindered her dirt moving, and she does not have enough dirt for winter, so she was gonna contact Ken, cause she needs a dozer with the snow and being so wet, her loader's not got the right power, enough power, so she was gonna reach out to Ken to see if, get one of the big dozers out there to help with that, and then. And then, Dr. Travis Sherwin was from Houston Engineering was going to get some stuff together for capping for spring of '24. Still an opening at the landfill. And otherwise, I think Jim's been pretty quiet. Haven't heard from Mr. Landowski. I think that's it.
Okay.
I got a couple things.
Rick?
Before we adjourn, but one was Kevin after. Mentioned, you can go ahead if you want to.
Oh, no, go ahead.
He just talked about it. And I did talk to Ken about it too, about, you know, chipping those trees up there or whatever and we're looking at probably not chipping them in my way till next year and, you know, being that the snow and everything, what to push it together and burn. Being that, he said it was, Ken said it, he looked at it and he said, "There's a huge, a huge job to chip all those trees." And a lot of people hauling them away for firewood too, so. I mean, it's going away. So I mean, we'll, I just told, I told Kevin, I said, "We're still in the game" and I know Ken said to clean up, you know, at some point, so.
And Kevin was okay with waiting till spring?
Yeah.
Yeah, Candace is gonna look at pretty soon pushing them up, buddy might have looked at how much snow is in the way and buddy wanting to get up there. Did he say this week or next? Maybe next week? That they're gonna put them up on a pile. And I haven't talked to Kevin myself yet.
And the other thing that was brought to my attention by some of our older commission, past commissioner members is that, it's probably something for Cindy or whatever, I don't know where it's gonna go. It's just right now, it's just information. But they said that at one time that there was a height limit on that ash pile that went through our land use and stuff for coyotes out of town. And they, I don't know where, you didn't know where it was at, you don't know what the elevation did. They suggested that we ask coyote to come in and give us an update. One suggested that was given that we could do, just have them let us know where they're at with things.
We got the public hearing for delinquent taxes at 11:00. Since it's a public hearing, let's recess till 11:00 and then we'll resume.
Are you here for the, are you here for the hearing?
No, we were here for the Oliver Forum, too, I understand, for the duration.
Okay, all right. Well, that one, wow.
Yeah, the one, yeah, quick easy peasy, so thank you for all your offers, appreciate it.
Because you never know.
Well, that's exactly it, yeah.
And then hearing Beaver's update on how important that CO2 is, perhaps?
That was interesting.
Yes, it was, yeah.
Because I know that's for that project, that's...
It was suddenly just kind of shut down. But I think it had to do with landowners not wanting to sign, you know, things like that send the alert. But I don't think, I don't know. We'll have to see, but.
Because that one, that Carleton Summit project, that came, that was supposed to come here with Mercer County, was it?
Yes.
Yeah.
But only a small, the main thing is in Oliver. I mean, everything's in Oliver. I believe even where they store it is gonna be at the Mincota.
Okay.
But just a little bit of it would come through to the south part. So we had two, yeah, I'm not sure how much, but I know we had a little bit, but the main thing was in Oliver. So, but you're with Next Air then, huh?
Yeah, actually, my case is easy period. I have materials probably flat for a law firm out of his heart.
Oh!
Yeah, so I'm here local council, it's a standard early work at the county level and then before the PSD.
Oh, okay, cool. Very good.
Since we have the public hearing coming up, last Walsh's property is on that list.
Okay, last Walsh. Hey, all right, awesome. Yeah, and, yeah, I want to make sure that. I guess it won't, call me if, or I just got two people, I'll call if they get paid.
We found out there were some people that were discussing our forum, that forum, that treasures forum or whatever, that brothers and sisters cannot come in and pay, neither can friends.
Really?
Century Co., I don't know, I texted Todd.
Money is money.
Todd, Todd and whatever, and related. So...
They could just give it to the brothers and sisters.
Well, that's what I said yesterday, we had a brother calling, he said, "Well, it'd be my dad or my, the owner that would come in." Supposedly it's parents, the owner, children, the administrators and executors. And yeah, parents or children, but not siblings.
Wow. Yeah, good to know, good to know.
We didn't have a, we didn't, you didn't have a list of our delinquent tax?
Yeah, you did, and I got it here.
Okay, so I can give it out.
And this is just for people to discuss, you know. And I do have two of those properties crossed on.
Okay.
I'll go through part of my rainforest here and see if I have it. Oh, I did submit one of these, I see some through this one. I can't remember if I submitted my expenses or not. This is it, right?
Yes, that's it. Okay, this guy. You should.
Not in our packet, that's, Jean brought that.
That was from, I believe, the last meeting. Here's a copy if you wanted it.
Well, I can look on these. November 1st, my son's birthday.
Hey, Dan, we had a comment come through on on that period, on the, is it Special Assessments District? Yes, did you want a copy of it? I, I did, specifically. I thought it was an interesting comment. The hearing is not until the 6th, it's the 7th.
Two meetings.
Yeah. No, the hearing is for our special assess, no. All we're doing is allowing people to come in.
Give us everything.
We're giving them a chance to come in and say... We're gonna run that next year, we'll do it the same day.
Okay, 11 o'clock, I'll call the meeting back to order. Is there a motion to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing for the delinquent tax? Motion by Rick, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, Rick, all right, Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye. We're now in the public hearing portion. Don, do you have anything on this, or is this? No. Okay, and this is for the sale step, okay.
And nobody's come in, no.
Okay.
Nobody's come in to pay what they owe? Yes. Do you have your list? The top one, New Burger?
New Burger, okay.
And Walsh?
Okay.
Okay, anybody from the public, questions? Go on once. Go on twice. Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting?
So move.
Motion by Jean, second by Rick, any discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes, we're in the regular meeting. That's all we have on our agenda, so with that, meeting adjourned.